Okay, I'll call us to order and ask our clerk to establish the roll call.
Commissioner Blake Moore?
Present. Here.
Commissioner Whitfield?
Here.
Commissioner Hart?
Here.
Commissioner Golds?
Present.
All members are present, thank you for that. We do have a need to add one item to our agenda for a purchase order of some information that just come into us today. Curtis Creepmer's here from our 911 Center to present about a generator system for that, a replacement generator system for that building. So, right above our statistics, right after the purchase order to Jake Marshall, we'll need to add for a purchase order for a diesel generator for the 911 Center. Is there any other modifications to our agenda?
No, sir.
Hearing none, I'll make that modification in form of a motion. Do we have a second to approve our agenda with that one modification?
Sir.
Have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as modified. Okay, we do have our minutes from our previous meeting held here back on March 28, 2024 at 6:30 as well, and our clerk has prepared these minutes. Is there any changes, corrections, or anything need to be updated on those minutes?
No, sir.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stolz, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented. Okay, we do have a couple of proclamations tonight that we want to present, so this is always good when we have these proclamations in our communities. We have a proclamation by the Wall County Board of Commissioners, Sexual Assault Awareness Month, whereas the Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is a widespread and has public health implications for every community member in Walker County. And whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impacts our community, as seen by statistics indicating that one in five women will have experienced sexual assault by the time they complete college. And whereas, we must work together to educate our community about what can be done to prevent sexual assault and how to support survivors. And whereas, staff and volunteers of anti-violence programs in Walker County encourage every person to speak out when witnessing acts of violence, however small, and whereas, with leadership dedication and encouragement, there is compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing sexual violence in Walker County through prevention, education, increased awareness, and holding those who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions. Therefore, I, Shannon K. Whitfield, Chairman of the Wall County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Walker County, and ask every citizen to join anti-sexual violence advocates in support services, programs, and being part of the solution to end sexual violence. Sign and seal the 11th day of April 2024. So, we do have Ms. Christie's here today. We'd ask you to come up. Anyone else that would like to join you? We have this proclamation, and we want you to speak, and then we're going to do a photo with y'all at the board.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for recognizing Sexual Assault Awareness Month and for showing support to survivors. SAM, which is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, is the opportunity to listen and to give honor to survivors and to show survivors they're not alone, learn about sexual violence in this digital age, and raise awareness and educate communities on how to prevent and end sexual violence in our community. So, in 2023, we provided 36 forensic medical exams, answered over 800 crisis calls, and provided 548 counseling sessions, and served a total of 352 victims, with Walker County being 38.2% of the population between all counties served. So, we are a nonprofit, and we serve Walker, Catoosa, and Dade. And we serve all victims of sexual violence and their families. And our services include a 24-hour hotline, crisis response, onsite forensic medical exams, because those do not happen at the ER, they happen in our office, and advocacy counseling, and we work really, really hard providing the community with education and awareness. So, thank you so much. Appreciate it. And do a picture?
Yeah. Anyone else speaking? Okay, we have another proclamation we want to read here tonight. A proclamation by the Wall County Board of Commissioners, Senior Citizen Day in 2024. Whereas, the U.S. Census Bureau estimate that 13,550 Walker County residents are age 65 or older. And whereas, Walker County recognizes the impact of contributions made by older adults to our community. And whereas, May is Older American Month in the state of Georgia, and residents are encouraged to celebrate the power of connection and engagement with older adults to build a stronger community for a stronger Georgia. And whereas, older adults are encouraged to find a new passion, go on an adventure, and push boundaries by not letting age define their limits. And whereas, Walker County supports organizations like the Northwest, excuse me, the North Georgia Community Action, which operates senior life centers in Chickamauga and Lafette, to assist older adults with daily nutritional needs, health education, and general wellness. And whereas, Walker County desires to honor the older adults in our community. Therefore, I, Shannon K. Whitfield, Chairman of the Wall County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May the 8th as Senior Citizen Day in Walker County, and encourage our older adults to attend a special event at the Walker County Civic Center at 10:00 a.m. on May the 8th in their honor. This year's theme is patriotic. Those attending are encouraged to show off their red, white, and blue. Sign and seal the 11th day of April 2024. And I know we have some folks here for this tonight.
Yes, sir.
So, would you like to speak?
I would, yes, sir. Yes, sir, thank you. So, Senior Citizens Day is very important to my family, my brothers. Back in the early 70s, my dad and a group of local businessmen, many of them, James Ingram for one, Ron Harrison, Mr. Bob and Mr. Charlie Gilbert, many others, decided that they wanted to have a day to honor our senior citizens and pay tribute to them building Walker County, building Lafette, building Rossville. And just wanted to honor these folks. And I'm very proud to say that that mission statement has continued, and just very proud of that day. And I know, Mr. Chairman, my brother Don, the master of ceremonies, I know he's in the audience. Don, would you like to say something?
Sir, thank you, sir. Gentlemen and ladies, if y'all have never been to one of these, irregardless of your age, you should come to the Senior Citizens Day. You will enjoy it. It's one of the, as my dad said, one day of the year when all of the seniors can get together to fellowship, see each other, share a meal, play some games, and have some fun. And they do have some fun. So, I would encourage you, please, to come to Senior Citizens Day, enjoy that. My dad just enjoyed putting this together with the gentleman that Robert mentioned. Also, Mr. Charlie Gwynn was another one that was instrumental in this, and Mr. Joe Hall. So, I would invite you to come, enjoy this, have a big time, because the seniors are certainly going to have a big time. And thank y'all very much for honoring that day and remembering our day.
Okay, this time on our agendas for our public comments, anyone that'd like to speak today? Yes, sir, right here in the front. Please state your name, sir.
I'm Jim Pope, and I have a question for Mr. Gottlieb here, and it pertains to the governing authority for this board here. Of course, you know, it's listed in the Enabling Act that they're the governing authority, but it also has a, it's Simpson Clause in there, scattered in there, and been a good bit of disagreement about it. My question is, two parts. One, suppose if our local legislators wanted to initiate action to amend this law here so that this board here has a limitation on what it can do as far as replacing the chairperson with a county manager. First part of the question is, would it be possible they could word a law in such a way that there would be virtually no question about it?
Okay. First of all, one of the two ways in which our Enabling Act can be amended is through legislation in our state, through our legislators down at the Capitol Building. And the other way is through what's called a home rule, where our Board of Commissioners could basically do the same thing, it's a different process. But to answer your question, yes, the Enabling Act could be amended through our state legislators. And when we get to a question, and it's a, I used to get this a lot when I was in private practice, can something be, you know, armor? Can it just avoid being a matter of interpretation? Jim, honestly, I find very few things in life anymore that are not subject to legitimate interpretation. So, you know, they certainly could work on wording that would define however they wanted, whatever they wanted to do, as long as it was within legal bounds. In terms of it being, you know, what I'll call foolproof or safe from attack, that would be really dependent upon what the provisions were and how it was drafted.
Well, the second part of the question is, if it can be amended then, what wording or language do they need to put into the act so that it will be unquestionably clear that this board has limitations on firing or replacing our county chairperson? Can you share any, how it should be worded?
You know, I have not had that proposed to me before, so off the cuff, no, sir, I can't, I would have to give that some thought. I would certainly have to speak with the Board of Commissioners to get, if that's what they wanted to do. I would also have to speak with our legislators and make sure that everybody's on board with what the intent of any amendment is. They do have folks down at the State Capitol who do draft legislation. They do permit the board and citizens and attorneys to provide comments or suggestions in terms of wording. So, you know, if I was asked by our Board of Commissioners or by our state legislators, then I would go, you know, I would want to make sure everybody is aware of the situation and try to capture what the consensus of the group is, and then I would be willing to offer my help in drafting any type of legislation that affects us here locally.
Okay, now time's up.
Thank you, sir.
I might have a little bit more comments on this next time.
All right, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Let's start, hold up, please.
Gary Williams. Tonight, y'all will be voting on a resolution R-014-24 dealing with a grant. This is, and it also says in that grant, it was another resolution R-046-23 back in October. When y'all, well, there's very little discussion that night about that grant. And one thing, it says that the county would match 30%. That was not publicized on the county website as 30%. It was publicized as 20%. And then that night, at the meeting, when I got here, it had been changed to 30%, and then that was not even brought up and discussed when y'all had your discussion about that. So, that's a little bit of a problem. Now, Commissioner from District 2 was not here, so this was, the commissioners from District 1, District 3, and District 4, voted on this. Now, it says in, you know, it said then, that night, that it was 30%, and now then tonight, it's 30% of matching funds. And it says down there, whereas, Walker County has applied for $200,000 in federal funds from RTP and agrees to commit 30%. That's $60,000 for a walking trail. I believe that money could be spent somewhere else myself, and I think majority probably in this county would agree. So, I'd be against expanding and revamping whatever that trail over there at the Civic Center. 30%, that's $60,000. You know, if we got $60,000 here, 60 here, 120 here, 500,000 here, you know, all I see is taxes and fees going up. So, I'd be against it. So, I hope y'all take that in consideration when y'all vote on this.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, ma'am, in the back.
Hi, I'm Laura Alsley. I just have a few questions about the audit, that's it. Would the departments that handle the SPOLOST account fall under county departments that the chairman, Mr. Whitfield oversees?
SPOLOST accounts?
The SPOLOST fund.
Well, there's, in the document, there are certain elected officials as well that had allocation of funds, so the sheriff's office-
So, I'm just talking about the SPOLOST. So-
Yeah, so the sheriff's office had several million dollars of SPOLOST allocation. So, they coordinate and manage how they want to allocate and use those funds. But still, anything over $25,000, regardless if it's a department under the county government or a department like the sheriff's office, being a constitutional officer, still comes back to this board for final approval.
Okay, perfect. Well, what was the SPOLOST funds that were co-mingled with the general fund that the auditor was talking about that was a violation of state code? That was one of the compliance issues. It's on page 107.
Yeah, our CFO's here. Greg, would you like to come forward? This is Greg McConnell, he's our in-house CPA, CFO.
Yeah, hey, Greg.
Back in 2008, 2008 SPOLOST funds, there was overspending back then, and waiting to spend additional money and transfer the money over, it was just an oversight, and money was not transferred back over. It's something like $60,000, $70,000, kind of minimal amount of money, it's still in an interest-bearing account, so it's neither here nor there, I'm sorry. It's there, it's growing interest, it's just not in the proper SPOLOST account, so.
So, I did notice that the same compliance issue was from last year as well, and it was stated that the response was that you all had some, you had procedures in place and would be allocating the funds as quickly as possible.
We had thought that we'd be spending that money out, but due to whatever the board says, like what they want to spend it on, it was kind of an ongoing process. And we can run around and move the money back and forth, and this money's at Georgia Fund 1, and it's jumped through a lot of hoops to move that money from there somewhere else. Plus, it's a larger interest-bearing account, so.
Right, okay. But the state law does state that it is a violation.
Yes, it is a violation, we're aware of that, very much so.
Yeah, yeah. So, are you all going to be transferring those funds?
We should be spending the money shortly.
Okay.
Actually, I think it's already been spent, hasn't it, the 2008 SPOLOST?
Yeah, I think we did use some of that SPOLOST money on project earlier.
At Culver, yeah. So, it's been spent, so it's no longer there to be mingled.
So, last year's response was not correct then, in that the funds were never transferred? Like-
Well, last year, they weren't transferred, they've been done this year.
So, there was a compliance issue, though?
Yeah, last year was a compliance issue, yes.
And the funds did not transfer according to the management response?
You said that about five times already, you don't have to say it again.
Okay, according to the manager or management response.
Yes, in the audit, you can read the audits, there. We're not in compliance, that's me, it wasn't anybody but me, because I sat there and oversaw, I mean, overlooked it. It didn't make $50,000 significant in which SPOLOST account it was sitting in.
I agree, it doesn't say-
Then why you make just a point out of it?
Well, just because the code does not-
I know what the code says, you said it enough some times. So, why don't you go to something else, okay?
The code does not have a actual mail. It doesn't say the amendments.
Let her go to her next question.
Okay.
Thank you. So, my next question is, under tax abatements. I did see that there were two local manufacturers that were listed. Where are the tax abatements for Macklemore?
There was not any tax abatements at that time of that audit.
There were, okay, perfect. Now, in reviewing the audit, it also said there were capital asset expenditures for the land purchase of the Walker County Business Park. How much was that? Because I didn't know how much it was.
It was right at $1 million, plus or minus $1 million.
Okay.
And that was a cash purchase.
Okay, and it was through the, okay, it was through the development authority. Okay, perfect. So, the development authority has special limited obligations that relate to various projects and represents, that represent conduit debt. So, does that mean that the development authority is the issuer of that conduit debt?
Well, that debt that is done on bond issuance, like what Roper did, it states in those bond documents that the county or any other local government or the authority or the city or no one locally is responsible if those go into default.
Yes, there are no-
It goes back to the bondholder. So, there's no liabilities-
Yes.
-for the local government at all.
Right, I did see that. But what I was asking is, is the issuer the development authority for that debt?
From a technical standpoint?
I believe that it is. I would have to look at it.
I think it makes sense. I think it does make sense, but I don't know for sure. I was just asking.
So, whatever the state guidelines that have to be followed, because there's always a third-party company that does those, specialize in bond issuance, so they have to make sure all, everything's in compliance.
Perfect. And did they, are there any, like, voluntary or additional commitments that are attached to this conduit debt?
You say voluntary commitments?
Yeah, it's when an institution can voluntarily allocate funds to pay debt service?
We've not done any-
And voluntary means just to elect, you know, it doesn't mean that it would land on our liabilities.
No, since I've been involved.
Okay, perfect.
Your time is up. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move forward with our agenda. Thank you for those comments tonight. Okay, we have our resolution R-13-24, a resolution of the Walker County Board of Commissioners to award a contract for local maintenance asphalt resurfacing project 2024-01. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas, Section 11, Item 7 of the Enabling Act grants the board, the authority, to repair public roads and bridges. Whereas, on February 22, 2024, the board approved a list of roads to be resurfaced or paved in the resolution R-08-24, and let those roads forbid under Walker County Local Maintenance Asphalt Resurfacing Project 2024-01. Whereas, the project was posted on the Georgia Procurement Registry and advertised to the Walker County Messenger on March 6, 2024, and March 13, 2024, as required by Section 12 of the County Enabling Act. And whereas, OCGA 32-4-68 provides that where a contract has been let forbid, that the county, by resolutions entered into its minutes, shall award the contract to the lowest reliable bidder, provided that the county shall have the right to reject any and all such bids. And whereas, among the bidders who fully complied with the requirements for bidding, Tally Construction presented the lowest unit price bid. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the contract for paving project 2024-01 is hereby awarded to Tally Construction, so resolved and adopted the 11th day of April 2024. There were four bidders that did bid on this, and we do appreciate each and every one of them for participating and bidding on this. And you do see the price breakout that was requested by all bidders, but this one, for Tally Construction, that all bidders filled out the same information. So, we have a motion by the board to approve this resolution for this paving contract.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, by Commissioner, ask you, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution carries. And for those of you here or watching at home, this is authorizing for 51 miles of roads to be paved here in 2024 using our T-SPOLOST funds. Okay, resolution R-014-24, resolution of the Wall County Board of Commissioners to authorize the filing of a formal application with the Georgia Department of Natural Resources for a recreational trail grant. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas, Walker County owns and operates a public walking trail on the grounds of the Walker County Civic Center campus. Whereas, the board approved resolution R-046-23 on October 23, 2023, authorizing the submission of a pre-application for the Georgia Department of Natural Resources Recreational Trail Program, RTP, to assist in making improvements to the community's asset. Whereas, Walker County has been invited to file a formal RTP application for funding to extend the resurfacing of the trail. Whereas, Walker County has applied for $200,000 in federal funds from the RTP and agrees to commit to 30% in matching funds to complete this project. And whereas, if awarded, Walker County also agrees to adhere to the conditions of the Georgia Recreational Trail Program. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Wall County, Georgia directs county staff to proceed with submitting a formal application to the Georgia Department of Natural Resources for $200,000 grant, commits to match the funds required to complete the project, and if awarded, the chair is hereby authorized to execute the award package and directives under the Georgia Recreational Trail Program, so resolved and adopted the 11th day of April 2024. The trail that we're talking about- The trail that we're talking about is the walking track that's in and around the Civic Center, the Agricultural Center, and also the Pavilion. And you'll recall that that trail has a lot of contour changes, elevation changes to that property. And it is a fine gravel material that is on that track. So when we have rain events like we've had this week, we have a staff member that'll spend basically at least a day out there reworking that trail, bringing more gravel in, addressing the erosion problems. Also, when that trail system was put in, there was railroad cross ties, cross ties that were put in as boundaries and also probably to help address the erosion and the water flow. A lot of those cross ties have become end of life. They have, they've served their useful purpose. A lot of them are coming apart and, you know, the different insects and things get into them. And so what we're hoping to be able to do with this grant is to be able to eliminate this ongoing maintenance that we have to do on this top surface to replace this with a rubberized surface. And so when people come and walk, they actually have something that has a little bit of a, of a give to it. So it's not walking on hard concrete or hard asphalt. And it would virtually eliminate any of the maintenance that we have to do with a tractor and a, and a blade to drag that on an ongoing basis. You know, sometime we get into the dry parts of the summer, you know, we may go a couple, three weeks and not have to touch it. But when you have rain like we've had all early spring, it's a weekly event that we're spending a lot of time and materials to be able to do that. So since this is an existing problem, this is not us creating new trails. This is an existing problem that's costing us money. Here's an opportunity to get $200,000 of funding to come and help us address this problem. And we have already made it through the first round of this. And so that's a very good sign that our pre-application was competitive. The project is well-recognized as a, very much of a need. And they've been out to look at our project. And anytime you get the green light to enter into the final application, that really sets you up for success. And so we feel very good that we have a very good opportunity to be awarded this and to be able to enhance that and to do away with the maintenance of that track. Any questions of the Board?
One question. So, and I have looked at the new playground. There's the same material that's on the playground, correct?
That would be an option to, to look at, some type of rubber type surface like that.
And do we feel like the 200,000 plus the 60,000 would do the whole track?
That, I don't know. Joe has been working on this directly, and I don't, have not seen his cost estimates on that. So I don't have the answer to that.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to Mr. Williams' question, the 30% commitment, where will those funds be coming from?
We still have some ARPA funds that, you know, we've used for capital projects and, and for outdoor use as well as fire department use. And so that would be my recommendation would be to come out of our existing ARPA funds that we still have.
Got a couple of questions and comments. So as, as Mr. Gary pointed out, and I hadn't caught, I didn't catch it either. What was, is it just a, do we have a misprint or just a misnomer?
I think it was just a typo when it went out recently, and it got called and was updated to the correct amount of being 30%.
Because 30% is what it's been since day one.
Yes. That's the, the program itself.
And I would say, Mr. Gary, I, I appreciate your, your, your due diligence and your hard work. I, I, I am, that, that is in my district. I'm there quite often in that area. And I do see a lot of usage. It has been for many, many years. I appreciate your concerns with spending that, you know, $60,000 of, of taxpayer money on, on a trail, however this is existing. And it's something that, it is a lot of seniors that do use it there. So I just wanted, I just wanted to acknowledge, I appreciate your concerns and the work that you've done on it. But, but I, I personally feel that, that there is a need to, to keep it in place for, for the, the people that do use it. We just redid the, the playground up there with an all-inclusive for handicapped children and children with special needs and all that. So to give the, get a surface down that would be more safe and it would last us and it wouldn't be something we're constantly spending taxpayer money on, I think might be a good call on this one. But just, just wanted to, to reply to your comment. Thank you for your...
Can I respond?
Sure you can.
You said a lot of people. How many is a lot? How many people? Have you, have you got any actual data showing how many people use that a week or on the weekend? Or how many people actually use it?
No, sir. No, sir, I don't. I don't have any data. All I can do is tell you that I, I live within about five to six miles of there. And I buy there probably twice a day. And, and year-round, I see people out there even in the wintertime, but in summertime especially, it's quite a bit of usage there. I don't know the numbers. I, I, I'm sorry.
That'd be good information to actually have data of how much usage it is. It's going to be really worth the use. $60,000 for, you know, a project when, you know, a committee could scoop it up, plant grass, and be good to go.
I understand, I understand.
Not spend money on.
And I'm sure with the, the playground being there, it's going to get used even more. Because, you know, I see that in Fort Obethorpe with their playground, their walking track. And you get more usage when more people are visiting that, that location.
And this surface would be wheelchair-compatible to it, huh?
Well, it would be. You're going to have some terrain, just an actual terrain. So it'd be all on how strong their batteries are. But it, what we've got now is not. Plus, those cross ties really are trip hazards as well. And we would completely eliminate having any cross ties there at all. Good questions, good discussion. So we have a motion to this resolution?
Yes, sir. I support it.
So Commissioner Hart makes a motion to approve this resolution. Do we have a second?
I, I'll second this motion.
Have a second. My Commissioner asks you, any further discussion of the Board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution's approved. Okay, this next one here is a little bit long, but I think it's very important that it is read as well. Resolution R-0-15-24, resolution of the Walker County Board of Commissioners to establish a policy for the adoption of the county's fiscal year budget. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, has set forth an Act Number 165, the Enabling Act, passed by the Georgia General Assembly during the 2017-2018 session and subsequently approved by the Governor. And whereas Part 1, Section 15 of the Enabling Act states that the county's annual budget shall be reviewed and adopted by the Board prior to the beginning of the county's next fiscal year. Whereas Part 1, Section 11 of the Enabling document states that the Board shall have the authority to establish by appropriation, resolution policies governing all matters that are reserved to the exclusive jurisdiction, to its exclusive jurisdiction, excuse me. Whereas the Board desires to establish a policy for the adoption of the county's annual budget as set forth hereinafter and therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County. A, all county department heads shall begin preparation of their budget requests for the upcoming fiscal year no later than the first business day of May of each calendar year. A copy of the county's department head's budget request shall be submitted to the Board chairperson no later than Tuesday of the fourth week of May. B, at least one work session shall be held by the Board to review departmental budget requests. Department heads will be invited and assigned a designated time to present their budget requests during the work session. The work session shall be scheduled on the first Monday of June, beginning at 9:00 a.m., unless an alternative date and time are agreed to in advance by the majority of the Board's, excuse me, by the majority of the members of the Board. C, the Board requests that each of the county's elected constitutional officers also provide their perspect, our proposed budget to the Board chairperson no later than the Tuesday of the fourth week of May and participate in work sessions as outlined above. D, if the need arises for additional budget work sessions, a second work session shall be held on the date of the first scheduled Board meeting during the month of June. If a third work session, excuse, yeah, a third work session is necessary, it shall be held no later than the date of the second scheduled Board meeting during the month of June. The dates and times of any work session subsequent to the first work session may be changed upon the majority vote of the members of the Board. However, all work sessions shall be completed no later than the date of the second scheduled Board meeting during the month of June. Following the review of the departmental budget requests, the Board Chairman shall prepare and present the proposed county budget to the Board at least at the last scheduled Board meeting in July, as required by Section 15 of the Enabling docu, of the Enabling Act, excuse me. F, OCGA 36-81-5 requires public hearings be held prior to the governing authorities adopting a budget. Public hearings on the proposed budget shall be held as part of a scheduled Board meeting during the month of August. So resolved and adopted the 11th day of April, 2024. And just so people are aware, we do work off of a fiscal year budget. And so the county's budget begins on October 1st of each year and then ends on the following September 30th of the following year. And so that's different from the state budget being on a July to June fiscal year. And it's different from other counties and other cities. So each local jurisdiction can choose their fiscal cycle of their budget. This is the one that's been in place in this county for many, many years. I don't know how far back, maybe from the beginning, I don't know. But ever since I've been involved and engaged in county government, it has been on the October, September fiscal year cycle. And so that's why these dates start out in May and June and get into the end of August. And that's building up for having that budget approved by the Board and all the advertisement, public hearings done before that October 1st date.
One question. And that is, that's what I was trying to discern here. The date that, that we need to have everything, that they need, we need to have it to our Tax Commissioner's Office to do their tax bills?
Well, that would be setting of the mileage.
Right. But, but remember, but, but I just know that we've pushed that to the, to the, to the limit a time or two because of time constraints and getting right to the, to the end. And of course, as of last year, if you recall, your proposed mileage rate, we had actually wanted to look at that, but we didn't have time to change that because the tax bills had already been prepared. So part of the reason, the main reason for adopting a, a budget procedure is to make sure that we make those dates. And so I just want to make sure of those dates and make sure that those dates, that, that dates are included i- in this document. In other words, it's all for a reason. It's to get everything. Like you said, we've got date, state mandated dates that we have to be. But I know pushing our Tax Commissioner's Office, who gets the tax bills out to get the money in to pay the bills, you know, like I said, last year, I know it was, there was some discussion between some Board members of, of wanting to maybe try to lower that mileage just a shade more, but we didn't have time to. So, so that's my question is, what is the drop dead date that we need to have? Or do we know that we need to have this? Because I'm, I'm seeing everything up to the, you know, the, the last meeting in August. I, I want to say it was either September 1st or October 1st, but I'm not, but I can't remember.
Yeah, because you brought this up the other day.
That was, because that was part of my main concern of getting a procedure in place.
Because I think it had been in the past September 1st.
And then, and then I think they backed it up with no extensions or something like that.
I think, well, they would move maybe forward to September 30th.
That might be, yes. It might, it might have been. I, I'm not sure. So I, I want to make sure that we capture that in this document.
Well, if we have the budget by the end of July, that gives us a month, right?
I, I think so.
That's the design of this, yes. That way you hold your public hearings for your budget. And then also simultaneously in that timeline, you could also be holding your mileage hearings.
Okay. Just, just wanted to clarify.
So that way you get it done by first of September.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify because that, you know, like I said, that, that's just a, it's just a procedure so that we can, that we can kind of make sure we hit those.
Yeah, the goal would be, it would be to have everything in sync by the end of August.
Okay. And there's, there shouldn't be any reason we can't. If we get this adopted, we should be right on time.
I think so. I think it's good.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, very good. So we have a motion to approve Resolution R-15-24.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Blakemore, any further discussion?
One question.
Okay.
So the, the first meeting is on the first Monday in June. I'm assuming that'll be at the Civic Center? Is that, is that over to the public, right, or would it?
We can determine what y'all want to do, since it is just a public hearing. We could have it there in the center of the county.
I'm just thinking about your space.
Yeah, that would, yeah. And two, there could even be court going on here. So that's probably what we need to try to have it. That's a good point. I hadn't even thought that far out. So we probably do need to have it at the Civic Center, make sure it's available so we don't interfere with court. Because sometimes they could have special hearings last minute and things, and we don't want to be disruptive to them. Good, good point there. Glad you caught that. All right, any other questions?
No, sir.
All right. So we got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution's approved. All right, have a Resolution R-0-16-24, resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint a member to the Northwest Georgia Region 1 Emergency Medical Services Council. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. And whereas one of the duties delegated to the Chairman of the Board is to appoint members to the, to all committees of the Board with the approval of the Board. And whereas the Northwest Georgia Regional 1 Emergency Medical Service Council coordinates, facilitates the improvement of, and maintains the quality emergency medical service system in our 16-county region. And whereas statewide changes to Region 1 EMS Advisory Council bylaws have resulted in a new term dates and lengths of terms. And whereas the term of Blake Hodge, a Walker County representative, will soon expire. And whereas Hodge has provided expect, exceptional, excuse me, exceptional representation as a representative of the Walker County and desires to continue to serve on the Northwest Georgia Region 1 Emergency Medical Service Council. Whereas Chairman Whitfield submits the following appointment to serve as the representative of Walker County on the Northwest Georgia Region 1 Emergency Medical Service Council, Blake Hodge, for a three-year term ending on June 30th of 2017.
2017.
Excuse me, 2027. Thank you, thank you. Therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the appointment of Blake Hodge is approved, so resolved and adopted the 11th day of April, 2024. And it's stated in there in the accompanying letter from DPH, Blake has been serving on this for quite some time. And I believe Curtis, you're our other representative as well. So we have two representatives that serve three-year terms. And this is Blake Hodge's reappointment. I did talk to him about this. And he was very much willing to serve and has enjoyed being on this organization and contributes.
Yes, sir.
So I'll make this, since this is an appointment, I'll make this in the form of a motion. So do we have a second to that motion to approve this resolution?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution's approved for the reappointment. Okay, Resolution R-17-24, resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to amend the regular meeting calendar for 2024. Whereas a Resolution R-002-24, the Board of Commissioners of Walker County established the Board would conduct regular meetings at 6:30 p.m. on the second and fourth Thursday of each month in 2024. Whereas the amendment to the regular meeting calendar for 2024 is necessary due to a training and a county holiday concurring on a scheduled meeting dates on April 25th and November 28th. Therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County that the regular meeting on the following dates in 2024 are canceled, April 25th, 2024, and November 28th, 2024. So resolved and adopted the 11th day of April, 2024. Do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner. Ask you, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution's approved. Okay, we have a purchase order here to Lothrich Equipment here in Lefedon Main Street for a couple of Bush Hogs 4110 single wing flex rotary cutters. This would be coming out of our splash allocation for our public works. They are a member of Sourcewell, which is the government pricing. So you'll see there in the middle of that quote, about halfway down the middle there, says the less the Sourcewell membership discount of 30%. So that saved $10,625.70. We don't currently have a backup bat wing in our inventory. We've got some, they're getting some age on them. And so this, trying to be proactive, get a couple of these. And then once these come in, we'll put these on the front line as new equipment, take a couple of our existing bat wings and use them as backups. as new equipment, take a couple of our existing bat wings and use them as backups or secondaries, or we could even, you know, use them in other applications if need be. But this was, you know, being a Sourcewell contract member, being a local vendor as well, that way we make sure we're getting the, the best price. And we have been using the Bush Hog brand, so we keep a lot of parts and supplies, and our team are used to working on this brand, and so we get very good service out of these as well. So the Bush Hog brand was the recommendation of our Public Works leadership team to go with the Bush Hog brand and to use the Sourcewell contract pricing. So this would be for the purchase of two of these. The net price on each one of them is $25,765.30 each, and this would be a total of $51,530.60. And these are used for our roadside mowing on our, on our mowing crews primarily. Any questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve purchase order?
One question, I got a question, what's availability on these?
These, last I heard, in production are several months out, but once this is approved, they're going to see if they can find one to get us one, so we'll have, you know, a backup on hand, but it could take us several months to get these. Good question. So we have purchase order 2024-1424, the amount of $51,530.60. Do we have a motion to approve this purchase order?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, purchase order is approved. Okay, we have a purchase order 2024-1457 for a new 15-ton split heat pump system. This would also come out of our splash funds, this is the amount of $41,765. The best proposal that we've got was from Jake Marshall Services, the proposal is attached. We did get a second quote that was very competitive, it was round numbers about $1,000 higher, so it was very competitive. So we felt real good that for this type of unit and replacement, this goes on the Rossville Athletics Center up on Williams Street. This would also be relocating this new unit to the rooftop. There's several units on that building, and this is the only one that was sitting on the ground. And so it's safer to have these up on top of the building. Also, we want to be able to use that area to put a sidewalk in to give better access, and we're also adding a new emergency door on that northwest corner of the building. I think they started on that yesterday, installing that new door, they've got it cut out, I saw a photo of it. So this will get this, you know, everything modified to get this unit up on the, on the rooftop, and they're showing about a 14-day lead time to get this going. But this is the main unit that covers the batting cage area, batting hitting pitching area, so it's a, it's a large room in that building.
Is this building also used for voting, is it not, or is it?
The future plan is, some upgrades that we're making is they could use that, so there has been some conversation, the election office has been up there and looked at this facility, just because it's more parking, easier accessibility, and so possibly in the future, they may use this building for voting. This is a very highly-used building here around, it gets a lot of usage. Any questions? All right, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve purchase order 2024-1457 for the 15-ton split heat pump for $41,765?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Sir.
Have a second by Commissioner, I ask you, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, purchase order is approved. Then the amendment to our, Jenny, we're going to ask Curtis Crickmore if he'd come up and speak to this, this project he's been working on and doing research on, and finally been able to pull this together. So Curtis, the floor is yours.
I'll just start off by thanking everyone for the opportunity to present. At the request of the Board, I was asked to put some numbers together for replacement for the 911 generator. I believe in your package, both, everyone has a copy of the two that we've received. Both are, both of them are, I guess alike in their scope of work, so they're, they're apples and apples. We don't have to concern ourselves with the, with the scope of work. They're both 100 KW generator that would be replacing 100 KW generator at the 911 facilities. And the lower bid, if I have the numbers right, of $78,583 would be my recommendation to the Board to move forward with this purchase.
Curtis, a couple of quick questions.
Yes, sir.
I know that this is, we, we have approved money for this quite some time ago, but I know it's been kind of a moving target as far as availability and finding what we needed, and we finally got it nailed down. What, what, tell, I want you to, to retell what you told me about the availability, because that was what really got me, was, was the availability on this thing.
So the availability on, on any products that we've been purchasing over the last few years is, is weeks and months out. The, the two that you have in front of you, one, they have some in stock available whenever we make the move to move forward. The second is a 24-week lead time, and that would be on the higher, on the higher bid.
So the one with Stowers, they've got some inventory.
Yes, sir.
But in, but in the bid, it says 14 weeks, but you're saying they do have a?
Yes, they verbally said today that they, they have some.
Curtis has been pushing, I've been pushing him a little bit, he's been pushing to get, get these guys to where we can, because this, like I said, that availability's just been killing us, and so we got it. Appreciate your hard work, Curtis.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the time.
So, so this unit will go outside versus the one that's inside now, correct?
Yes, yes, sir. The, the trend is, as far as the, the generators, everybody's moving outside nowadays with the enclosure to protect the generator and, and the fuel cell above ground. The, the indoor setting used to be for security, and nowadays EP, the, the environmental kind of problem.
They have frowned on having a petroleum engine inside, indoors in the 911 center locked up.
In, in any door, and then you, you have, you have the, the, the fire calls and, and any, anything that would, would come from that that's not maintained and, and I guess watched on a 24-hour basis.
So this unit within, sit outside, that unit that's in the building would then be taken out, so you have that room there. The $78,000, I would just not cover the safety switches and wiring it in, will they, can they do that, I'm assuming?
No, they're, they're going to wire.
That does include?
That's, that's all installation.
That's a new transfer switch as well, the transfer, automatic transfer switch is 30 years old, so that's got a new automatic transfer switch. And then some of that demo work, we might even be able to, we don't know yet, we'll have to look at some of that as far as removing the old and some of that, things like that, but, like, like I said, he's, Curtis is running through the wringer on this thing.
So this, this is safety switches, wires, and everything to get it functioning?
Yes, sir, and, and, and the de-cing of the, the old generator and the other fuel cell.
And the pad, the, 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 sets the new one on, I think existing as well. So it's all inclusive, yeah, we put it right there.
Perfect.
Yes, sir. That's, that's good.
Very good. Any other questions? All right, do we have a motion to approve this purchase request in the amount of $78,583 to Stowers Equipment?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner, I ask you, do we have a second?
Sir.
Have a second by Commissioner Blakemore, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution's approved. Good work, Curtis.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that, with Curtis, you can get with them and find out quick, because we could need to get them a deposit or something to make sure we hold, get one of those units at someplace held, so we can do that, please?
Sure.
Thanks, Curtis.
All right, our department statistics, we'll just hit a few of the highlights here. The animal shelters had a very busy month with 114 dogs on intake, 59 cats, they've had 72 animals adopted, 15, 72 dogs adopted, 15 cats adopted, 49 went to rescue, 51 cats went to rescue, returned to owner 21, and two cats returned to owners. Unfortunately, we had to euthanize three dogs and one cat. Our roadside trash pickup team, very proud of them. I was super excited last month when they picked up 13,980 pounds of trash off the side of the road, and they outdid that this past month in March with 15,420 pounds of trash off the side of the road. So we've got a, a great team working on our litter detail and picking up a lot of trash. Our fire department responded to 617 calls, installed 11 smoke alarms. Total nights booked at Mountain Cove Farms was 69, so we had a real active month at Mountain Cove Farms. Single-family home construction, it was 25 new single-family home permits pulled in the month of March, so it's got us to 67 for the year thus far. Still patching a lot of potholes on dry days, and a lot of our road peeping will help catch up some of these potholes we're having to patch, but 428 potholes were patched, 2,076 transit trips, so very, very active, good month of March, got a lot accomplished. So at this time, we'll move to our Commissioner comments, Mr. Blakemore.
This Saturday, we do have a micro-chipping event in Rossville at 301 Williams Street. It is $10 cash. I do encourage everyone to do this, our Walker County Animal Patrol Officers do carry a chip reader in the truck. If your dog is running at large, they can get it right back home versus going to the shelter. Appreciate all of our employees and the hard work, appreciate everybody coming out, getting involved, and if I can help, call, text, or email.
Mr. Raskin.
Like I said, it's, every week I got to follow this guy. But I do appreciate the input, the, the work that you folks do, the studying, the research, it does, it, it helps to shine a light on, on each topic that we're looking at, and it helps us make better decisions. A lot of great questions come out of, a lot, a lot of great questions and information come from the participation of, of the citizens, so we appreciate that. And like I said, if I can be of any service, call or text, I, I will email, but very little, so.
Mr. Hart.
Brian Hart knows that.
This Saturday, at the Murchie Valley Community Center, they're having their spring festival. Todd got over there and got the grass cut somehow this week, I don't know how, but it looks great over there, so that's going to be a great event if you have time to come by there, it runs from 9:00 to 3:00, I believe. And next Friday, the City of Lafette is having their Music at the Mars event, they did that a lot last summer, had the music events in town, had restaurants, drinks, it's a great, great thing if you want to bring your family out. And that was next Saturday over, and actually behind the Mars Theater. And the Tire Amnesty Day is the 20th, you're right. Yeah, so Payne's been planning up on that, so if you got 16 tires or less, you can take them to the landfill that Saturday for free.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight, and I want to thank all of our employees for their hard work, appreciate your dedication, the great job that you do. And I want to thank the Board of Commissioners again for Senior Citizens Day proclamation, that means a great deal to me, and I think it's just a great way to pay tribute to our seniors, and I think it's a good thing.
I agree.
Thank you.
Also, additional to what Commissioner Hart said about the Tire Amnesty Day, the City of Rossville Public Works has also designated drop-off spots, so people on the north end of the county, if you have 16 tires or less, they need to be free of any debris, water, trash, and off the rims, but they're on, it's Ellis Street?
Ellis Road.
Ellis Road, excuse me, Ellis Road there in Rossville off of McFarland, there at the Public Works Department will also be accepting tires, so you don't have to drive all the way to the landfill if you're on the north end of the town. There will be two, doing the Tire Amnesty at the landfill from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. again on April the 20th of this year, so looking forward to that. Payne always does a great job, I think this is the sixth one, or the sixth or seventh one he's put together. I think we've done six, I think this is the seventh one, so.
Is Payne not here?
No, he's normally here with us.
Well, I wanted to, since he's not, now he did say you can go by Rossville and drop off 16, then you can come down there and drop off, and I, I think that's what, I'm teasing folks, no, I'm giving Payne a hard time, maybe he'll have a heart attack over that one.
Yeah, he could probably do it for you.
That'll get him, that'll get him.
But that was a grant that we did get from EPD to do this program, through their Tire Trust Fund that they have, and so they will reimburse us for the cost of the disposal of those tires, and we work with a vendor that takes and recycles those and chips them up, pulls the steel out of them and uses them for recycled materials, so that way they don't end up in the landfills. All right, at this time, do we have any executive session needs?
I want one personnel item, real quick.
Okay, so we do have a need for personnel, anything else? Okay, so I have a motion from Commissioner Blakemore going to executive session for personnel, do we have a second?
Next second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned, we'll return as soon as we finish our executive session. Thank you. Okay, it is still April the 11th, 2024, and it's right at 8 o'clock, we just exited our executive session, there's no further business for the Board at this time from executive session. So do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Blakemore, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys, we stand adjourned.